County Mayor Jeff Mason is presiding.
Thank you, Mr. Dacey. Cordell Smith.
We proudly come to you tonight and thank you for all the many blessings that you've given each and every one of us. Lord, we ask you to be with the loved families that are going through their trial at this time. And, Lord, we ask you to be with anybody that don't know you before and they might get to know you before it's too late. Lord, we thank you for everything. Dear Jesus, ask you to pray this prayer to the Father God in heaven, now and at night, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You made me see. You mentioned in your prayer that our prayers were due to the loss. Roll call, please, Ms. Dacey.
Lydia Gregory. Helen Bowes. Terry Gibbons. Billy Bass. Greta Kirby. Charles Kent. Ron Pascal. Lynn Brown. Scotty Barrett. Matt Inyard. Erica Abel. Cordell Smith. Danny Urazari. Stephen Leish. Eddie Stout. Casey Elrod. Justin Malden. Javen Cripps. Tommy Vane. Junior Fields. Connor McDonald. Danny Huff. Ed De La Rosa.
Seventeen. So that is a poll. All right, the next item is the public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for the public comment? Is anyone here who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the August 12th to August 22nd meeting. I'll take a motion to approve those opinions.
Motion to approve, thank you.
Motion to approve, Matt Inyard, second. Question fields. Any questions, discussions, or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved, as written. All right, next item is under announcement, is that it is that time of year to reelect Chairman and Chairman Pro team. At this time, I will take nominations for Chairman.
Make a motion to nominate Mayor Mason to be Chairman of the State County Commission.
A motion for Jeff Mason, any other nominees? Do you want to take one?
Make a motion to nomination sees to Mayor Mason be elected of acclamation.
A motion, the second on that, the second was, is that Chad? Tom, Tom, Matt. My motion is second to elect Jeff Mason by acclamation. Any questions, discussions on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank y'all, thank you everyone for electing me to be your Chairman. I appreciate it and it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the Chairman of this commission. All right, next is Chairman Pro team, at this time I will take nominations for Chairman Pro team.
I nominate Mr. Cordell Smith.
Cordell Smith. Any other nominations? Okay, I think you have to, Chairman said you didn't have to have say on nominations, but I will note it, all right? Any other nominations?
I nominate Junior Fields.
Two, Junior Fields. Any other nominations?
I nominate Justin Holland to be Chairman of the Pro team.
All right, any other nominations?
I think.
Billy Bass, Matt Inyard. All right, any other nominees before we move on? All right, we have four nominees.
I make a motion to nomination sees and if no participant gets majority of votes, the top two candidates go to a second ballot.
All right, second, a motion and a second on that. Need one to, the top two move on, okay? All right, we will start, we call your name, please say who you are voting for.
Terry Gibbons. Billy Bass. Greta Kirby. Charles Kent. Lynn Brown. Did I get the votes right? Matt Inyard.
Cordell Smith.
Cordell Smith.
Cordell Smith.
Danny Urazari.
Justin Malden.
Stephen Leish.
Cordell Smith.
Eddie Stout.
Junior Fields.
Casey Elrod.
Matt Inyard.
Justin Malden.
Cordell Smith.
Javen Cripps.
Cordell Smith.
Tommy Vane.
Cordell Smith.
Junior Fields.
Matt Inyard.
Danny Huff. Ed De La Rosa.
Fields. The votes were Cordell Smith with nine, Matt Inyard with five, Junior Fields with two, and Matt.
Justin.
Justin Malden with one. All right, so Cordell did receive a majority of the seventeen, so Cordell, you are elected Chairman of the Pro team.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item is number twelve, is pages twelve to thirteen, your packet, that is the update from the Ohio Highway Department. If you have any questions for, question of Aaron, he is here. All right, seeing none, we will move on. Item number eight is the appointment of the District Eight seat vacancy. Tim Beller is here, came to me a couple of weeks ago and due to some family reasons and such, has decided to step down as his seat. And we thank Mr. Beller for his service, we certainly thank him while he's here. Thank you, Tim, for your service in the County Commission, you've been a great commission and you've served for people well, and we appreciate you. And just glad, glad to get to work with you over the past few years. With that, though, that leaves a vacancy that we did run an ad in the paper and tonight we are here to fill that appointment. I have been approached by one person, Mr. Tressa Bush, has announced her interest in running it. Is there anyone else in the crowd that would be interested in the vacancy in District Eight? I would take a motion to appointment, Mr. Tressa Bush.
Motion to approve, Mr. Bush.
Motion to approve, Casey Elrod. Second, Matt Inyard, I have motioned a second to approve of Mr. Tressa Bush to that vacancy vacancy. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, Mr. Tressa, if you will come up, will swear, are you in? Mr. Tressa, if you will raise your hand and swear, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
And I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I am about to assume.
And I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of County Commissioner.
The duties of County Commissioner.
Representing the Eighth District.
Representing the Eighth District of Smith County. Of Smith County.
Tennessee.
Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Let the text say with God.
Thank you, can I say, can I say something briefly for thirty seconds?
I'd be shocked if you did.
Of course, of course, can y'all hear me?
I don't mind.
That's what I thought, I didn't think it was on. Do you have the on?
Okay, I will be brief, I live in 402 P. Ridge Road. That is where my parents bought the property in nineteen sixty-eight. So it is home, that place in Chatham, Mount, the Eighth District certainly holds a special place in my heart. I also want to say that my father served on this body, I don't remember how many terms. Three or four in the seventies, eighties, maybe the early nineties, and I consider it an honor. And if he was here today, he would say. Are you sure, no, then he would say, well, if that's what you want to do, Tricia, that's fine with me. So, thank you, I just wanted to throw that in there, that my dad passed away a few years ago, he'd be going, mm, have fun, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a previous engagement, so I don't, I hate that I'm not saying, but I can, so I will see y'all next month.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, item number eight is amendments of the agenda and the approval of agenda. The only amendment I have is we will be voting on the public hearing for the fifty-foot road frontage. So after that public hearing, we will vote on that. There was a, when that ad ran for the public hearing, it came out at seven. It was mixed up, I didn't realize it was going to be in six, so if we get done with our business before seven, we may have to take short recess and then come back at seven to the public hearing and vote on that. So just want to give you that heads up, but I will take a motion to approve the agenda with that action I have added to the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Junior Fields. Second, Cordell Smith. I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussions on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Agenda is set and approved. All right, item number nine is the mayor's report. One thing, on the courthouse grant, we have got some positive indication that that may be good. We've got, you have a resolution tonight to pass that we passed several years ago, but they wanted to update one, saying that we would fund the grant management. And we've already kind of talked about that money set aside for the courthouse did come, so just want to pass that through. The Center Citizen Center did apply and win another seventy-five thousand dollar grant for building and parking lot upgrades. We're looking for that, that will replace the other two heating and air units, striped silver parking lots, some upgrades in the bathrooms as far as ADA compliance. I think that's it on that, so that, that brings in over a hundred and five in total in grants in the past two years for the Center Citizen Center, so we're pleased with that. That's kind of all I've got at the moment, any questions or ideas on that? If not, you have your financial reports, Ms. Dacey's here, if you have any questions on those? Seeing none, those, we'll move on, item ten is your committee reports. Next is approvals. You do have Mr. Mickey Barrett's bond and Terry Collins' bond for them being reelected to serve this year. So at this time, if you want to group them together, we'll take and group all those bonds, or we can vote on them individually.
Motion to group and approve.
Matt Inyard. Second, Chief Mason. All right, so I have that, okay? All right, I have motion to approve Mickey Barrett's bond and Terry Collins' bond, any questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? They do pass. All right, item number three is the updated county road list. You have that list in front of you, Mr. Barrett's here, if there's any questions on that, but if not, I'll take a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Justin Malden, second. Second, Ches Ken, all right, I have a motion and a second to approve the county road list, any questions or discussions?
Same, same like the last year.
Yes, I missed the last year. Any other questions, discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? County road list is approved. All right, item number four is a cooperative service agreement between Smith County and the US Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services. This is an agreement between us and USDA to, they're going to come in and mitigate our vulture problem at the landfill. There's, there, or what they do is they, they say they kill, harass, and relocate, so that's what they're going to do. And that's, this is an agreement that we had to sign between, since it's a two government bodies, we're asking for approval on this agreement.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, Casey Elrod, second, Matt Inyard. Roll call, all right, ten has due, money is roll call, all right.
Page sixty-seven, in our package, Article twelve, it says this agreement shall become effective nine months, twenty twenty-four, and shall continue to do eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, should that be twenty twenty-five?
Yes, it should be, thank you for catching, we'll fix that. All right, any other questions, discussions on that? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Dacey.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown. Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Urazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout. Casey Elrod. Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps. Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Danny Huff. Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, thank y'all. We thank you and I'm sure the neighbors will thank you once they get started with this, and those guys. All right, item B is resolutions, items one through four are budget amendments, page nine. You will see in your packet, you see the old budget, the resolution, but behind it, you, Ms. Dacey has put a very, very thorough description of what each budget amendment is and what's moved and what the reasoning behind that move is. One of the things different we're doing this year is with going back to monthly meetings and trying to expedite budget amendments, so we don't hold county departments over, the school board or anything, we're looking for other amendments, go straight to the commission instead of going through a committee. Tonight, this is one thing Ms. Dacey has been asked to do, and she's did a tremendous job of putting that information out there to explain them to. So at this time, I will take a motion to group and approve, or we can vote on separately.
Motion to group and approve.
I have a motion to group and approve, question fields. Will I have a second?
All second.
Matt Inyard, second. All right, I have a motion and a second to group and approve resolutions one through four. Any questions or discussions on these amendments? Yes, sir.
Daisy, are they working with inside their funds, or are we just, where is this money coming from?
Oh, um, which resolution are you referring?
All of them, honestly.
Page seventy-one, the resolution for the general fund. There is a fund balance request on fifty-four one-ten and fifty-four two-thirty. Those are both related to reverence, page seventy-two, fifty-four one-ten, fifty-four two-thirty, you see an explanation. But those are registered as budget items that need to be added, that were not added in the original budget request. Not items that they're asking for additional funding that wasn't added for those current positions.
Got you, so they become a general fund, yeah, right.
Yes.
Turn that to.
You've got grant revenue in here and the fifty-five five ninety, those two items are related to opioid settlement funds. Those are funds that were received in a previous fiscal year that were required to be spent by twenty twenty-six.
It's going to be appropriated by the end of this year.
And had to be appropriated this year, so those are fund balance draws as well, but that is made, set aside, it could be spent for any other purpose other than mitigation efforts for the opioid epidemic. And then the revenue and fifty-nine hundred is related to funding for the Chamber of Commerce for tourism, they're reimbursing the county for that, so that would be revenue.
Yeah, that was money in, money out, money in, money out.
On page fifty-three, there is a fund draw for Fund One Twenty-two. This was because the work wasn't completed on the opioid previous year, where we had planned it, it will be paid out insurance data, that's the reason for that. And page seventy-five, Fund One Thirty-one does have a fund balance draw, but it's related to insurance recovery that was received at the end of the year to relate, to do anything with it. And then. Pop for Lakeside Drive, they used up nearly their entire pop for the, for the year repairing that, so they're asking for a fund balance draw to replace that for the rest of the year. And then page seventy-seven, you do have a fund balance draw there. That was where I missed adding the EMS safety direct vehicle in the original budget, it was a part of the light in the vehicle, yes.
Just to clarify on the opioid settlement funds, those are, we spent years trying to figure out how we, the best way to spend those and where they would make the best use. And it felt like every time we had a solution, the states have not been ready to do that, so we opened up some applications back in early part of the year and had some folks apply. And so what we ended up doing, if I'm not mistaken on the totals, y'all took them out, the hundred and eight is going to recovery board on that side to offset some costs over there and often offer some new programs for them, because that's, that is, that is the state side that we need to be using. It has very specific uses, the one twenty-nine seven oh nine is, is the direct lawsuit, and it's not got as many restrictions on it, but it does have restrictions, and that's going to several organizations that apply for that. We'll have more information on that coming once we get all this worked out as to what, how we awarded that and what are we going to, so. Any other questions, discussions on resolutions one through four?
I'll say this, we need to be careful and be thoughtful in the end budget amendments as we go through this year. We know what our budget looked like, we do have a projected fund draw, one thing that concerned me during the budget process and what we were doing is the investment income has been high the past couple of years. The Fed's just dropped interest rates for the first time a half percent, and it's probably going to continue to happen, so investment income is going to, going to come down for us. You know, so we need to be careful looking, you know, at these budget amendments, because we do, we got to, the government's got to operate, the county's got to operate, we've got to get things done. We do need to be considered and be thoughtful as we move through, through these budget amendments, and any elected official, just ask them to be thoughtful, neither they are, but to, you know, probably need to consider being a little bit tighter this year than we have been here past.
Any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion and a second, Ms. Dacey, I mean, Stacey, will you do a roll call?
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Urazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Danny Huff. Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Item number five, excuse me, item number five is a surplus item from the Sheriff's Department, they are surplusing AP equipment. At this time, I will take a motion to approve that surplus.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, Junior, second, for Stephen Leish, any questions or discussions on this resolution?
Can that vehicle be used for any other county, or is it completely done?
That'd be a sure question. Your surplus vehicles, it can be used for anything else, or is it for shot, you sell them?
I'd say it's for shot.
Okay.
If you say a shot, then it really is.
I guess for national purposes, the sheriff did ask that all the funds received through and sales of these surplus vehicles go back into the capital projects fund, so if we reallocate something else.
Did y'all hear that, the proceeds of the sale will go back into capital projects for the next time, for new vehicles.
Do we need to add that to the resolution?
That's typically always like.
We do. All right, any other questions, discussions on this? All right, since it's a different class, then we'll do a roll call, please, Dacey.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Urazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Passes, thank you. All right, item number six is Resolution Zero Nine Twenty Twenty Four O Six, and it applies to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development for connecting community facilities program. This is the courthouse remodel grant that we will apply for. What this resolution is says is you will pay at minimum the two-hundred thousand dollar match, given the two-hundred thousand, or the two billion dollar grant, or if it's, it's ten percent of whatever we are awarded if we are awarded.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, Matt Inyard, second, Casey Elrod, any questions, discussions on this? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Ms. Dacey.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Lynn Brown.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Urazari.
Yes.
Stephen Leish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
All right, item number seven is Resolution Zero Nine Twenty Twenty O Four O Seven, is the reappointment of Josh Dixon to the Smith County Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Stephen Leish.
Second.
Second, Junior Fields, I have a motion and a second, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Josh is real point. All right, so Resolution Zero Nine Twenty Twenty Four O Eight is a Kyle Owen lease agreement, that is for the new ag extension office over in South Orange that we moved into. We just need to get the lease approved, the lease agreement approved on the last.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Matt Inyard, second, Stephen Leish, any questions, discussions on this? All right, seeing none, Ms. Dacey, will you roll call? All right, seeing none, Miss Stacy, we roll call.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Erizari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Zero Nine Twenty-Twenty Four Zero Nine is our community corrections partnership appointment list for the year twenty-four, twenty-five, you can have the list of performance there, at this time, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Junior Fields?
Second.
Second, probably behind, all right, motion in the second to approve that list, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Resolution Ten is a Resolution Zero Nine Twenty Four. Ten is the retention of service weapons for retired full-time shooters or deputy shooters. Junior, I want to take one more. Purpose of this is to give the community a chance to grow their attention more time.
Well, we had a request from the Sheriff's Department to look into this, the state passed a law that allows upon authorization from this body, allows the sheriff to, like better terms, award or allow retired deputies to retain their service weapon. There's certain requirements, they have to be retired in good standing or on disability retirement. And if you pass this, it's a one-time passage, after you pass this, unless this body revokes it, moving forward, the current sheriff may award a service weapon to a retired sheriff or deputy sheriff upon their retirement. It does take a two-thirds majority to pass this, so.
Yep, seventeen.
I don't think it's going to be a problem. Is eighteen of twenty-four, what do you, or is it seventeen, is it two-thirds, is it seventeen?
No, no, well.
Sixteen, you need sixteen.
You need sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
You're making me do math.
I don't think.
We wanted to get sixteen, right?
I was thinking sixteen, that, no, two-thirds.
Okay.
So, so for the sake of it, we'll roll call it just because it has to specifically get a two-thirds, but that is the, that's the gist of this, of this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion in the second to approve Resolution Nine Twenty Four Ten, any questions or discussions? Yes, sir.
The retiree or beneficiary of this, would they have to pay for that service weapon?
There is, that is not part of the requirement built into this.
I just didn't want to say that we passed this and then we forgot that part, or there's questions on that?
No, that, this, the resolution also requires whatever, whatever process is necessary to reassign serial number that may be associated, things like that, but as far as payment, it's, there's no requirement for that.
Gotcha, so whenever he awards something, would that come back to us as a surplus, or is this take care of that?
This will take care of that.
This is, this is, this is blanket. Right, that will last. Okay, anytime, they don't have to do that, I'm going to get your credit. Okay.
They have to make a report of it too, but they don't have to get permission.
Right, right, okay.
This is, this is retroactive, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
This ain't going forwards.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not been, what do you mean? I, I guess it's like.
Yes, yeah, we want to, we want to make sure Roy gets.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, 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 there's no award to have.
Hence the reason.
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, yeah, this was, you know, to do that for Mr. Roy, absolutely. All right, any other questions or discussion? Good question. All right, seeing none, we need to roll call this, just make sure you get to it. All right, we will roll call, please.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Erizari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Absolutely, yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. Later on, we will have that ceremony, and then we will do it, so. All right, Resolution Zero Nine Twenty-Twenty Four Eleven is establishing a budget committee. Since we moved out of the Fifty-seven Act into Eighty-One Act, this is a resolution Jeremy wrote to establish a budget committee separate from the central finance, or central financial management committee, sorry, Justin, I'm a little crazy when I say that, but financial management committee. So this is a resolution, just setting that up, and their job will be in this room to start and work on the budget. It's different than the Fifty-seven Act because I don't serve as chair anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are, there are three functions, budget, investment, and purchasing, that automatically fall under the financial management committee unless you as a body take action to pull them out. What this does is it pulls out budgeting, so that you can have a separate budget committee than the financial management committee. That it, the Fifty-seven made the mayor as the chair or part of that budget committee, that's not a requirement here. And Justin, as chair of management, if you want to speak on that any at all as far as moving it out.
Yeah, I mean, I will just say this, we've got other members of the financial management committee, financial management committee is not going to do the budget, so. That we have, in part of that is, we've got two members of the financial management committee that have their own budgets for us, on two, they're, you know, they've got other things to deal with and they're deploying them overseeing the budget of the county as a whole also. So this was, when we did policies and procedures for the financial management committee, we assumed that this was going to happen, there was nothing calling for a budget to, for the financial management committee to take over the budget either.
And this budget committee, this budget committee has nothing to do with the school board's budget as far as.
No, no, this, essentially, all this will do for us is this becomes our budget committee, the rest of the budget process stays the same.
Yep.
That's it.
And we mirrored it after the Fifty-seven in that it was the five, minimum of five, or, well, Fifty-seven was five members, we made it minimum five members, but it's either, it can be members of legislative body, or it doesn't have to be. Now, you know, historically, we've made them members of the body, but we kept that option there, mirrored it after Fifty-seven.
All right, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second, motion in the second. For that, any questions or discussions on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. All right, Resolution Nine Zero Nine Twenty-Twenty Four Twelve is a, is an interlocal purchasing agreement, and this is for a grant with the courts. Am I playing it right, lady?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is just another one of those buying contracts that we're approving, that allows them to use a purchasing agreement, which gives them a reduced cost on that, and it doesn't have to be bid.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, plan, second, Casey Elrod, any questions or discussions? All right, since this deal's in place, we will roll call, please.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Erizari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, thank you. All right, item number thirteen is Resolution Zero Eight Twenty-Twenty Four Zero Nine, it is a levy of a countywide motor vehicle tax, and it was tickled from the August three.
Motion to amend to an additional fifty dollars, approve.
An additional fifty dollars?
From one hundred to fifty.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to amend the resolution to fifty dollars.
Second.
All right, second, I have a motion in the second to amend the resolution, this is not approving, it's just amending the resolution down to fifty. All right, any questions or discussions on this, Mr. Daney?
Just want to say a few things about this, so I know that the county needs more revenue for the roads, the roads are in bad shape. I think Nick Bear is great job as highway superintendent, we can't ask anymore from him for what he has to work with, this is giving him more resources to work with. To me, it's not the wheel tax, we have this November election coming up right around the corner, we could send this to a referendum. I know that some of our commissioners.
No, not this year.
Not like that.
Not like that.
We were, we were told we had that option.
You did, it almost.
Well, as it was, we no longer have that option.
Well, I mean, you can, but it would be a special power after that election.
We'd have, we would have to pay a respectful way.
This. Okay. How, how much time do we need in the amount?
Seventy-five minutes.
We did that, right? We did that, yeah.
Yes, seventy-five.
Yeah. Yes, service fee.
All of this wheel tax, it will go directly to the highway department?
This is road, it goes into a fund, just like we've done for the past two or three years, it goes into a fund, and it can use for oil, rock, or purchase equipment.
But I mean, it will just be for the county roads?
Yes, this, in order for it to be took away from that, you got, you or a future body will have to come back and take this resolution off and vote another resolution in. Yes. One more year, I thought it was. Yes, so yes, it will go in, just how we've been doing it.
So, my, does this put the total tags, so my re-register, around that ninety-four dollars?
Yes, I think you're at forty-four, twenty-nine of that goes as far as the state registration, fifteen of that is a wheel tax for the county, and it goes to jail bond debt reduction, or payment.
That we're, we're standing at fifty, vote on that, that's about that ninety-four?
Ninety-four dollars, yeah. Well, right now, you're just voting to approve it, to amend it, but yes, once we decide.
Fifty gets us to ninety-four, okay.
Yes, correct.
For fifty dollars.
Yeah, you're voting to amend this resolution to fifty, then we'll come back and approve this, or vote on approving this resolution, I don't know, get ahead, my second. You're, we're voting on to amend this resolution to fifty dollars wheel tax.
Right, he, his motion was to amend and approve.
Oh, we wish to, okay, all right, so you are voting to amend and approve it at fifty dollars.
And let me go ahead and state that it does take a two-thirds vote.
Twice.
Twice.
Yes.
So it'll need sixteen to nine, and sixteen to not go.
Correct. Unless you vote to send it to a special election. Yes, sir.
Sorry, this is a part of the territory. Commissioner Cordell, I talked about wanting a provision for disabled or low income, do we have any thoughts or anything prepared for that?
We had, Ms. Norris and I had some conversations about that, there were some concerns as to how her office would, would maybe prove for the burdened place. There were, there were some conversations about tying it directly to another program such as tax relief with, with the trustee's office. Those are kind of your options, I think it's Ms. Norris's opinion that, that tying it to something to a random disability, I shouldn't say random, but to a, if you say disability, are you going to say a hundred percent disability? Does she have to verify, what documentation do you want her to verify for that? Those were some of the concerns that she had, she can speak to that if you'd like to.
And how many people will put their vehicle in that person's name?
So.
To get that break?
And so if you wanted to tie it to something more static, you could, or limit how many vehicles, I don't know if this is right on your issue. Those were some of the discussions. It's up to this body, if you want to impose something else in addition to the resolution, there just wasn't a consensus really between us that we felt like you would want to do, so you're free to amend this further if you, if you stick, so.
Cordell.
I stood up and asked last time about giving special concessions to our elderly. I understand we all use the road, and to do it the way I propose to do, will cause a whole lot of trouble for Ms. Norris's office. So what I would like to ask y'all, if you would, anybody that is on their checks, and which would be real easy for her, she could look, hey, he's sixty-five years old, we'll give him a break. Is there any way we can charge our elderly of Smith County a less rate than what we would for us? I mean, I understand, Mr. Barr has done a wonderful job with what he's had to do with, and he needs more to work with, I understand that, and we've got to help him get what he's got to have. But at the end of the day, we've got a lot of people on social security here that perhaps worked at the shirt factory that didn't make much money, or worked at Welch and didn't make much money, and now they're not drawing very much money, and they're limited on resources. Is there any way we can give our agent a break? The rest of us, we can make our money some way somehow, and if we don't, we just have to ride around and let Mr. Fields pull us over for some dirty tags.
Are you, are you asking to make a motion to amend it for anyone over sixty-five?
Yes, yes, at a lesser rate.
What's that lesser rate?
I mean, to me, anything helps when you're in this position. I'm not going to sit here and tell you twenty-five dollars is the magic number, I think it's something that needs to be discussed amongst us, and let us come up with something that'd be fair to everybody. Instead of just saying, running in there and saying, hey, this is the way we're going to do it, I think it needs to be discussed further than what we're doing.
I would, I'm sorry. The last conversation we had was about disability, and the other bad was there are other things that are tied to that. It wasn't just solely on age, my concern with just solely on age is whether or not we would be approaching the possibility of some kind of age discrimination or something like that. I would need to look into that if we're just basing it on age, that, I, I, I would, you know, it's one thing, like I said, the tax relief to trustee's office, that is approved process, you know, and it's a clear top, but it, but I, and I welcome some of the other opinions of others in the commission on that, but I do have that to turn.
And another, another point that I'd like to make, I understand this situation could be taken advantage of, somebody could go and try to register ten cars in grandma's name over here to get a break.
That's what'll happen.
What I'm asking is, each person gets one vehicle, no more. I don't care if you own ten, if you can afford ten vehicles, then you don't need our exclusion, no way, you don't need to be exempted, but give each one, one vehicle at a discounted rate, that's all I'm asking, if we can find some way to do that.
So, what, so the motion, I don't know, so much you're, you made a motion to amend, is a motion to offer a discount of some sort?
Yeah, of some sort to our, to our elderly.
But that, that, that's better.
That's the reason I'm asking for discussion amongst this body.
Okay. Well, it's second on your motion to. Well, they said on your motion to discuss the amendment.
Okay, so, I agree with Cordell, and there's a lot of elderly that need something, but, we got a lot of elderly, hopefully, I won't need it when I get older, but, so why can't we just have, what, don't, you said we had a program already set up that they can go and apply for the tax relief?
That's with the trustee's office.
Okay.
We were just talking about that as a exception.
So, we've already got that set up?
Yes.
Oh.
Not for the tags, though?
Not the tags.
So, why don't we, why can't we, why can't we just put that on there that if they, if they qualify for that for land tax, it does, it relates into there? Is that easier or harder?
It'll make it harder for her if we do that one.
Well, no, no, because it's basically different, they didn't bring your plans.
Yeah. If, if somebody's struggling that, if we've got elderly that's struggling that, or disability, and they don't have to pay land tax...
It's allowed to reduce, they pay them.
But, what if they don't own land? How would that pay rent? So, I don't know. I agree, there is some that...
There are, there are vast, there were complications with exceptions.
Yeah. Justin, any suggestions?
For the counties who do a wheel tax rebate, there are certain other criteria other than just age. There is income also on that, and they do require an application, they do require verification, they do require you to show proof of income. It's pretty, it's pretty detailed what these other counties do. It's Robertson, Shelby both do it, and they require a lot of paperwork in order to do it. With that also being said, they do cap it, it is capped, it is not the full wheel tax amount in those counties, and it is limited to one vehicle per household, too. So, you can't turn around and, and register ten, ten vehicles in grandma's name to avoid, avoid the wheel tax. So, there are some other things, and there are some protections in place as well, but it does require quite a bit more work in order to be able to do it. I will say this, I'm making the motion as a compromise to get it down to fifty dollars as part of that, is to help with that. Hey, let's also say that if we, you know, Mickey could use two hundred and fifty dollar wheel tax, that's not realistic by any means whatsoever, but by reducing it, this is gonna give him a million dollars if we approve fifty bucks, and again, he could use millions of dollars for. You know, if we, if we shift and we cause a different burden with another, we're fixing one problem, potentially causing another problem, you know, with it, is it, are we going to then increase our expenditures in, in that office in order to facilitate that way to counteract, you know, the discount?
So, like Justin said, Megan and Robertson County, just off of a quick search, both do a rebate program, and theirs is reduced to twenty-five dollars, one vehicle, sixty-five years of age or older, and must have a household income of less than twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's kind of the norm for everybody else. But, you have to also apply, like you said, thirty days to your tags being renewed, because you have to be approved by that office. And, and I'm on the, I want to help, but I also don't want to create more work for Ms. Clifford and her staff, and then she's asking for another person, which is gonna be more payroll. We, you know, we pick one problem and call it another.
All of those counties have a higher wheel tax than we do.
Yes.
Even with this proposal tighter.
Mr. Andy was next.
I just wanted to say, I'm for a wheel tax, I've got no problem whatsoever with that. But, I think it should be fifty dollars, straight down the middle, for everybody to get about all this other stuff. Much less than five dollars a month to drive your car. And if you can't afford that, you don't need the car. Now, that's just my opinion, and that's all, but, I mean, if you're going to give it a break at sixty-five, I'm way past sixty-five, I'll be seventy-six Thursday. Now, I don't want no break.
Cordell and Billy.
If we just give a simple reduction, just a simple reduction to sixty-five and above, that's not gonna put any more undue stress on Ms. Norris's office. She can look, hey, you're sixty-five, this is the rate for sixty-five. This is the rate for...
He said it number in age.
I would want, I'd want to look at...
What about this?
I don't, I'm not guaranteed, I just...
He said open the door.
This office resolution also exempts motorcycles and other vehicles that are used on the roadway.
It is written the exact same way as your previous wheel tax resolutions happened. So, however they are treated.
Non-motorsicles, non-motorsicles, or ATVs or anything like that. Ante tags, don't get them.
So, you're saying motorcycles, ATVs, GVs, antiques? Junior?
Could, could we, could we cap it at two vehicles per household, per owner, and then if it's anything above that, go back to the normal without the, the included, the extra pro- uh, wheel tax? We just cap it at two vehicles and the rest of them just back to what it was? Because there's, there's people out here that have five or six vehicles, and, and I've had people contact me that stated that, they're gonna get harder, hit harder with a wheel tax than they would with a property tax. So, I'm just asking if we could cap that at two vehicles per household?
We would need to, so, then you're probably, you're probably drastically reducing that million dollars.
Yeah.
My question, Del, is if you do it for people sixty-five, what about people on this baby?
If you do, if you do that, Ms. Clifford, you're gonna get some people that should be paying it, I'll just say it, I don't care, that are disabled, but should still pay.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't think we need to tie it to disability at all. I believe they're already exempt from what he said.
The original motion was to approve and change it to fifty dollars, Mr. Smith. Cordell has made a motion, or a motion to amend that resolution to some type of discount.
For the one vehicle per sixty-five and above, one vehicle?
Absolutely, your motion is...
Is his motion get seconded?
It had, yes.
Doesn't Justin have a second?
Yeah, but he made it in that stuff.
Yeah, that's where we're going. He has, that's where we're going. Cordell has made the motion to amend it to anyone over sixty-five gets a reduced rate. He's not named that rate, so...
I think that rate should be discussed amongst us and let this body come to an agreement of what would be fair to the county and to the citizen. I think that that should, we should call a recess, let us discuss this.
You can talk about it on...
Well, if we have it, we need to, but we need to come up with some number that's gonna be fair to everybody.
How much is that gonna reduce it if we...
We would have to some, because right now, it's about twenty thousand vehicles registered, is that correct? So, you're looking at right at a million dollars. So, if you start at sixty-five, we'd have to look at what percentage is over sixty-five in the county, and to tell you that number right now, I don't know, it's, it'd be, it'd be large.
I think we need to consider one thing. We all were present about a year ago when the state came in and did their report at the Chamber of Commerce. Said there were sixty million dollars in the whole roads. So, we're arguing about chipping away from a billion dollars while that number just continues to grow, so we need to consider that, too.
Correct, and we're in the process of, of stormwater.
Well, probably sixty-five million in the whole mountain, so...
And you ain't got, you ain't got culverts or bridges.
I was gonna say, I don't need to include bridges.
It's gonna be dope.
Yeah. All right, back to the original motion, do I have a second to Cordell's motion? Uh, no, no second, that amendment fails. I would back on Justin's motion. Justice, Justice made a motion to amend it to fifty dollars and approve. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, a second, and Cordell's a man?
We, we already had our...
All right, we have a motion and second, so, all right, any questions or discussions now on the fifty dollars as is?
So, the only thing I think is, us as a body, we need to figure out in the next few months if there's a way that we can get some relief for them if need, and that way we've got it.
Well, this is by resolution, so you have to go back and bend your resolution.
Right.
And do two more readings.
And do two more readings of it.
This, this has to be passed at two consecutive regular call meetings.
And then you still, if you do, if this body does that and passes it, then there's still a thirty-day window where a citizen can get a petition of, and we figured somewhere around five hundred signatures that will send it to resolution, or make it, or send it to reverend, which will make a special violation sometime.
But, at the same time, can't we do things like on taxes to reduce for lower income? You don't have to do it the same night that you made the motion.
What, uh, what?
We could always come back three, a year from now and make...
Amended?
Well, yeah, I mean, you could make changes, bodies could change ways, you know, that, that might help.
If it fails tonight, if it failed tonight, will that drop, will that rub in?
No, it would fail tonight, and you wouldn't, and then somebody else would have to bring it back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it could be brought back up.
Yeah. Yeah, so... Two dollars and it dies, that's exactly right.
I'm just putting it out there that we can pass it, pass it again, it could go into play, and then, you know, like, come up with a plan that we could look at, maybe if we could, that's something easier than, to get those citizens relief, I don't know.
I mean, that's... Justice, can we hear, does Mickey have anything to say?
I know, I think, here's my, here's my thing, Mickey, we've talked about this several times. If we don't do this, you're not gonna be able to fully utilize your being, and you're not gonna be able to perform all the work that you need to do. I mean, you're in the front, you're way in the front of that.
What's in the original budget, you got enough to do about eight miles of old chill, because you gotta save some of it to leave, you know, throughout the storm season, you gotta have somewhere to pull it from. And with the extra money the last two years, we've been, and plus what's already in our budget, we've been doing somewhere around twenty, twenty-eight miles of old chill. That's still not done, any of the asphalt, any of the bridges, no, all the coal, and anything like that. That's just enough to, you know, try to just pull the chill, and three hundred and thirty-something miles of old chill, even with the big dollars, I mean, it's gonna take several years to get around to get all of them.
But, if we don't, if you don't have money, then you get a lot...
Same thing that's happened, you know, for the past fifteen, eighteen years, you know, basically, you know, just throwing a little ditch here and there, and basically nothing.
Mickey, I hope we got... I got a partial invoice last week, do you, do you know exactly how they, how close they are to being done with stormwater side of it?
I haven't, I've, I've got an email that I've got a call, I'll need, you know, get such them to figure that out, but with the roads study, it was sixty-one million, so, I'm anxious to see what the...
Yeah, I've seen him crawl out of pops over the past two or three weeks, yeah. They're, they're there, so, I'll say that. And that was, that study is being paid for out of our two, our grant money, fifteen, eight, and our eight, our eight federal dollars. All right, I have a motion and second, any more questions, discussions? All right, seeing none, Stacy, roll call it.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Urzari?
No.
Stephen Lynch?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Sixteen.
Um, so, it passes on first reading, we will bring it back in October to that decision. All right, item C is a list of notaries, I think a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve Casey? Second. Second, Terry Givens, I have a motion and second to approve the list of notaries, any questions, discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, next on the agenda is a special presentation, I believe that's the sheriff, his taking on that, we'll turn it over to you, Sheriff.
First, I'll thank y'all for passing that resolution that allows me to do this, and it means a lot, and for those of you who... Well, I guess a lot of you did that are gone already, but for those of us that have a duty weapon in the states for us, day in, day out, night in, night out, it means something to us, and it's just a big honor for me to be able to allow Mr. Roy to assign that duty weapon that he can keep forever. And we'll, we'll get all the bells and whistles we have to do to make him get it all firing before he know it, Mr. Roy, and thank you for all you do here. When I first started... Not a very hard one. First time he said, do you have a weapon? I said, no, I figured you, you know what? He said, you figured wrong, but go buy. So, I went over to Russ, paid five hundred dollars for it, took it, and I carried it a few years, and then, Roadman or something came up, my brother, he decided to buy weapons for everybody. You can imagine, right, the fire weapons, eight and ten, twelve weapons, fire range, all of that, different, different types, all different, different analysis. He would love it, he's a good dude, but he, he got enough money to get everybody the same weapon. You can imagine how much dirt that made. But, a lot for it, I'm not gonna show it to you, because it's loaded. And it don't have safety, it's ready to fire. Safety is critical when you pull it there, the safety don't go, and it fires. So, anyway, it's been a good weapon, I've had it over, I'd say seventeen, eighteen years, and it never has missed by, it's never, never failed in any way. One time, we got short on money, we bought some old ammunition, I think it's from Russia, but I don't know, it didn't live by. Roads and money, fields and everything, I guess, I guess, pivot, I thought, I didn't ever go through that, but then it never did miss by. So, I was proud of that, and I'm glad that I could have a weapon that I could depend on, but that's what you need, have to go on. Sheriff always said, when you pull the weapon, spread it far, so, that's what he wanted, and that's what I wanted. I appreciate everything you've done for me, over the last about a year, especially tonight, I'd love to keep this weapon, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of unused to it. I appreciate it a lot, thank you very much. Another thing I would say, getting honored, finding tonight, or honorable, anybody knows, Mr. Roy knows, he's a man of honor, we've worked together for twenty-five plus years, forty seconds, and I can just, excuse my law, it's our county. Legs again.
Again, we, we thank... Okay, and we, we thank Mr. Roy for his service. You know, these jobs can be tough, all of ours, you know, make a decision, but somehow we get to do some pretty cool stuff, and it's pretty cool to get to do this now, so... I appreciate y'all voting to allow that to happen, so... All right, uh, next is the, item two is the committee list. We did pare those lists down. Jeremy and I talked about that and trying to make it balanced, where we have four committees that we felt was, that is, you know, trying to make it work. Not more than two people heard on one different, on different committees. We went up to four and reduced that number to six. So you've got six committees that, uh, under the county commission, and that, that gives everybody one seat on every, at least one seat per, uh... In the, in the committee list is the financial management committee, and we're reappointing it, I've reappointed it back to the same for a simple fact, it's, they kind of started this process, so allow them to, uh, to finish it, uh, for this year. When the implementation starts in October, uh, and ethics committee is in here, it was part of the policies and procedures of the financial management. So we're doing that, so at this time, I will take a motion to approve that committee list.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Chad?
Second.
Second, Cordell Smith? All right, have a motion to second, any questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are done, all right. Item number three is the public hearing, it is ten after seven, we're well within our time, so Mr. Mike come up and open that, uh, public hearing. This is the, this is for the planning resolution that came before you. I've lost track, it may have been June, June, uh, you guys sent it back to the planning commission. The planning commission has changed it, basically saying, instead of a total of four, it is four plus the originals, whatever's already that we've seen, so... That's the change in this matter. Open the...
Well, at this time, then, I'll, I'll open our public hearing of this...
It's working. Okay, no problem.
Okay, got it now?
Okay.
Uh, at this time, we'll, we'll open the public hearing of this again, is for properties in residential and agricultural zones, areas not putting a public, my entire road would require minimal fifty feet of road fright. So, does anybody want to speak to this?
Hi, my name is Leah Wooder, uh, buried in a dollar. Uh, he's not here tonight, he just went through a knee replacement surgery, so that would be pushing him just a little bit. So I'm just going to kind of go over what he said last time. Uh, he bought a farm in nineteen seventy-six, they moved to the farm in nineteen seventy-seven. Obviously, that's under zoning laws that exist now, that exist now. So there was never a question in his mind that when he would be able to get his kids or his grandkids land that they could build off. Um, we've been working with Jeff and Mike and the planning commission for a year now. Just to try to get this law changed so that he can use the land that he bought almost fifty years ago. Um, he's not going to make any money off of this, we're not high-sticking, we're becoming unreasonable. There's absolutely no way for us to have road front. It's never had road front. I traced the deeds and the easement back to the forties. The easement that we have now has been in place since then. Um, the land that our easement is through is my uncle, so it's also family. His brother owned that land before he did. So all we're asking is for him to be able to use the land that he paid for for fifty years and still pay taxes. It's free revenue for the county, you don't have to go look for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I'll say this, man didn't mention that we've been... Mr. Hunter's family is not the only family that's approached us about the, it's been numerous that we talked to about the, the state situation, uh... The, and effect, and, uh... We, like I said, we've worked on it for a year. Uh, it's something to me, and I understand, I understand the planning and the zoning and, and protecting the nature, protecting the community and neighborhood, but also there's just something about this nation is one of the freedoms of your land. And I just, to me, there's, I just, I don't, I understand some of it, but I don't, I don't really like all the fact that the government tell me what I can and can't do on my land that I paid for and I paid them taxes. Uh, so, you know, this was something that, again, it was not an easy decision, it was a lot, uh... And it's a, it's a very thorough process to get there. I mean, the very first thing you've got to do is you, is that the owner in front that's got the easement that you're, you're wanting to go across, that, that person has to agree to giving you that easement forever, forever. So that's the first thing, if you get past that, and then, you know, there's, you're, you're, just like any other sub- business, the electric company, the water companies, that we put in there, they've got a sign off on it. It's got to be a minimum of twenty-five foot, and then so, there, there's a process to it, so it's just not, the wild, wild way is, is, it's, it, there is a process, and it's very, you know, it's very, you have to own or inherit the land before zoning, so... I mean, it's, it's, it's not an easy process, but it's a process, so... Uh, that's all I, all I'm saying, like I said, there's something about being able to tell somebody what they can and can't do, the land bothers me.
Yeah, we, we did, I mean, I was speaking with the planning commission, I thought I was speaking for me, but... This, this is, is, uh, for people who've owned the land before zoning to the family.
Yeah, you can't go buy a property farm and do this.
Yes, exactly. I mean, if you buy in a lot of these property farms...
Two thousand and three?
Yes, July, July fourteen, two thousand and three, so... If, if you owned that land before then, you obviously didn't know that you, you owned it twelve, like, you didn't know that the rules were going to change. So then this is only for things that were owned then or inherited from your family, so, uh... Is anybody else who wants to speak to the area? But if not, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, and, and I will say that a- after the first, uh, time that we brought this in front, in front of him, we had, uh, you, you sent it back to the planning commission wanting six total building sites. Well, we already have some landline properties that, that have three or four houses on them, and these people wanted, you know, what, what the planning commission is concerned about is if we allowed six new sites on a piece of property that had absolutely nothing on it, then that was a little bit excessive as far as the utilities, the easements, uh, different things, so... The, the planning commission pretty much wanted there to be four new building sites, and, and, and your case, I think there's already three homes there, am I correct? So, I mean, still, we're going to have seven homes there, but are we going to have the, the opportunity to have four new ones? So you don't have as big a strain on infrastructure as you would have had. If, there, there might, if you fix a property in fifth county that had been on, that if you did, if you went up to six, then you might have sixty properties. And that, I think the planning commission was a little bit concerned that it would kind of snowball and get out of hand if it was more than four. So I'm thinking glad to try to answer any other questions if you have.
I believe what we sent back was six total.
That, that's correct, that's correct, if you, what, what was on the regional site, four total building sites, you're, you're exactly right. And when, when you, you asked to have it to six, well, like I said, weren't they already at three, they're going to have seven. So it, the planning commission was, they, they wanted to limit it to four new sites, so if you already have sites there, those aren't included. And obviously, like, like the player said, you know, all of that is contingent on the, the owner of the connection road giving you the easement. He might give you one, he might give you four, but that, that has to be, you know, it, it has to be brought, and, and all of this is overseeing before it's said and done. It's not just like getting a building permit, it is overseeing by the planning commission, and has to be approved by the planning commission, whether it's one or four, and it's done at one time. And that's it. So... And if you have any questions, put it through the die-ask.
I'm ready to vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, man, second. Junior, I have a motion to second to approve this new change to the zoning agreement, or planning regulations, seven of each regulation.
Where is the public hearing?
Yeah, he closed it, so... Motion to second to approve the changes, any questions or discussions?
Does this seem to be roll call?
Justin's got it.
Can we just do a wave of something? I mean, if we want to have real freedom, I'm just saying.
You, uh, that's, that's a motion you will make. So, we'll vote on this motion. Are you making that motion? Okay. Yeah. So I have a motion to second, any other questions or discussions?
Yeah.
Does any of you roll call because of what's going on?
You can ask where it's at if you want to.
I just want to make sure we're on, on the legal side of their counseling.
You don't?
I don't see any reason why I have to, but if you can request a, a roll call.
I'll request a roll call vote.
You request a vote?
Yes, please.
All right, so, Mr. Fields has requested to be roll called. Any other questions or discussions before we roll call this? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Stacy?
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Yarzari?
Yes.
Stephen Lynch?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Cripps?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
That passes. Next item is, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Unless there's any other business.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are adjourned.